All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, Mauricio.
Commissioner Cyvison? Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
Mayor Svechn?
Here.
All members present.
Great, thank you. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance. Former Mayor Eddle Cup, if you would lead us in the pledge, please. Everyone can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We're supposed to have invocation, but Rabbi Baron's not here. I was gonna do this anyways before we start the meeting. For many in our community, this was a particularly hard day. Four hostages, four hostage bodies were recovered in Israel. Sherry Bebas, thirty-three, Ariel Bebas, four, Fear Bebas, nine months, and Oded Lifshitz, eighty-four. I would just like to have a moment of silence in recognizing this.
Yes, and will never forget.
Thank you. Okay, do you wanna play the opening statement first? Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate your attendance and thank you for joining us tonight. Before we begin, there are a few important reminders regarding conduct during our commission meetings. Please ensure all electronic devices are turned off or set to silent mode to maintain the integrity of our proceedings. Mutual respect is the foundation of productive discussions. We ask that everyone remain silent and attentive when someone is addressing the commission. Clapping, applauding, heckling, or any verbal outbursts, either in support or opposition of the speaker, are strictly prohibited. Any individual wishing to address the commission must fill out a public speaker's card and submit it to the city clerk before the relevant item is announced. Each speaker is granted a maximum of three minutes. Should you exceed this time, the chair will notify you to conclude your remarks. Speak directly to the agenda's points, remain concise, and avoid redundancy. Should an individual speak without the chair's permission or continue speaking after a warning, they may be escorted out of the chambers. It is essential to avoid making impertinent, slanderous remarks, or becoming boisterous while addressing the commission. Such behavior may lead to being barred from future commission appearances unless the majority of the commission members present vote otherwise. The presiding officer may disallow signs or placards in the commission chamber. Please exit the chamber quietly and without disruption. The goal of our meetings is to facilitate public input and participation. However, disruptive or disorderly conduct hinders our collective objective. Individuals who want to speak on an item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of chambers. In order to maintain orderly conduct and/or proper decorum at these meetings, anyone who interferes with the orderly process of the meetings after a warning may be removed from the meeting and may be barred from further appearance before the city commission, as permitted in S-286-0114, FS, and SS-74-5, and 74-21 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Any necessary removal will be made at the direction of the mayor and will be carried out by law enforcement or designated sergeant-at-arms. It is essential that attendees adhere to these rules of procedure to ensure productive meetings that serve both the public and the city commission. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding.
Great. Okay, before we go to the order of business, we have some additions, but I want to just echo the message that we just heard. We are here run by Robert's Rules in addition to our own rules of decorum and behavior. Our January meeting was somewhat chaotic. That's not gonna happen at this meeting. We're gonna do this orderly because we have some loose ends that we should tie up. Towards the end of the meeting, we had a motion and a second made, which was to censure me, however, because of all of the noise, there was no vote. So although because of some of this confusion, and Mr. City Clerk, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's not technically unfinished business, so I'm bringing it back as an add-on item so that we can finish this up in an orderly fashion. And then with that, I'm also adding 9M for Commissioner Viscara, who requested this at our workshop, and 9L is being deferred.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a question. So the bringing back of the unfinished business, that is going to be in what order?
It's going to be in the order of it being in addition, so it would be towards the end.
Towards the end.
After, where we have our motions.
So is there a number to it?
That's a very good question. What number should we leave?
Yes, it'll be included under Section 10, which is motions.
Okay.
So right after the resolutions.
I was actually thinking that because it was unfinished business, but actually it has to come back as a new motion, and the mayor has now made the motion, I believe that that should be taken up at the beginning of the meeting, rather than at the end.
Okay, well, based on the way that we normally function is that I'm putting it where it would have been if we did it correctly. So because it is being, it's an addition, not unfinished business. If it was unfinished business, it would be something different. However, the point of it is to allow as much public comment and as much participation from the public, but also not to have to have the rest of the people that have items on the published agenda have to wait.
But then you're also...
But that's fine.
Causing the people who are here specifically for the unfinished business to wait until the end.
Either way, it's, this is what I am making a recommendation of. If you are saying you would like it at the end, then it's based on what the commission says. However, I mean, rather in the beginning. I feel it should be at the end so that we can go to our agenda items that we have published and that people expect to be heard on first. So with that, anyone on the commission, do you have any sort of issue with it being put at the T, at the item ten? No?
I would, I would like to see it as the first order of business.
Okay. So we're leaving it as after resolutions, correct?
Either way, I'm okay, but...
We have to decide, because right now we're setting our order of business. So we're adding 9M, we're deferring 9L, I'm making a motion to add to ten.
I'm okay leaving that at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, just for consideration of everybody else here.
I agree.
Okay.
Leave it at the end.
All right. Okay, okay, all right.
Mayor, so we just need a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so the next agenda item is zoning, and I will read the introductory statement. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has one zoning application. In these matters, the commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest, but must be based upon substantial competent evidence that is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. You will first hear from city staff and then from the applicant. After this, the mayor will allow anyone from the audience who has been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has a right to cross-examine any witness for rebuttal. Please make your comments concise. With that, I will read the preamble. In accordance with the LDRs of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised in the newspapers, notices have been mailed, and posted on the properties. All persons wishing to speak at this hearing, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. Applicant, you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and...
This is just for this item?
Truth, so help you God. Thank you. Okay, and before we continue, are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed? Any member of the commission?
No.
Yes.
No.
And the contents of the conversation?
Just that it's gonna be on the agenda.
Got it. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
If I may, please, I neglected to point out that we have the former mayor Eddle Cup in the audience, former vice mayor Lou Thaler, and we also have Commissioner Annabelle Lima Taub from Holiday Beach. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and commissioners. This is application PZ 2025-03, which is a site plan modification to the estates at Aqualina Offsite Parking Garage Project. The applicant is the developer and the current owner, A3 Development LLC and A3 Atlantic Boulevard LLC. The project is located at 17941 Atlantic Boulevard, which is adjacent to Government Center, directly to the south of us. And the applicant's request is to eliminate the condition of approval in City Commission Resolution 21Z183, and my clicker's not working. There we go. Okay, and the applicant's request is to eliminate the condition of approval in City Commission Resolution 21Z183 to underground all utility lines adjacent to the project. For a bit of background and a little bit of history, the Estates at Aqualina Offsite Parking Garage Project was originally approved by the City Commission in 2020, and then it was modified again in 2021. The project received its initial temporary certificate of occupancy in January 2024 and has since completed construction and satisfied all inspections and conditions of approval, except for the undergrounding of the overhead utility lines or under, overhead power lines. Essentially, the site plan modification before you this evening will allow the utility lines to the east and to the west of the project site to remain. And I do have some photos. So this is a picture to the east of the site, so between the parking garage and the gas station, these are the overhead power lines that would remain. And this is a picture along Atlantic Boulevard to the west of the project that shows the power lines that would remain. The applicant has advocated for the undergrounding with FPL alongside the city to the best of their ability. However, the undergrounding of these particular lines is dependent on work throughout the corridor, and there is nothing further that the applicant can do to make the undergrounding happen faster. This is the final item to address before the issuance of the final CO. So staff has compiled the relevant facts, and the requested site plan modification is presented to the city commission, and I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, does the applicant wanna say anything?
Good evening. Good evening, honorable commissioners, honorable mayor. My name's Jerry Campos, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, A3 Development, A3 Atlantic. I think Amy did a pretty great job presenting the issue concise. The park, the parking garage is directly in front of us, I think all of you are very familiar with it. Just to expand a little bit on what Amy said, in terms of the conditions on the site plan, we've satisfied all conditions, including, you know, providing landscaping, lighting to beautify the area, a walkable path, the easement that connects Collins Avenue to Atlantic Boulevard that many residents and children use on a daily basis. We've also included an antenna easement on the rooftop of that garage to provide the city with communication needs. We provided bus shelter easement on Atlantic Boulevard, accommodating commuter accommodations, and beautifying the area as well. So like Amy said, really, we've been working with, been trying to work with FPL for over a year to get this project completed. We installed multiple conduits underground to prepare the area, to get the power lines underneath and charged, and it's just been, we've reached a precipice where FPL really doesn't have a completion date for us, and, you know, our CO is dependent on it, it's really outside of our control. We're still committed to assisting the city in any way possible that we can and supporting these efforts, but we think that our CO is being really, it should be decoupled from this process. With that said, you know, happy to answer any questions that the commissioner or the mayor may have in connection with this request.
Okay. Commissioner Stilson?
Okay, who has to pay for the underground as of the conditions of right now?
The conditions right now are silent as to payment from the applicant, so there is no condition of payment.
So you guys are not the one that had the financial burden of putting...
We, we had the financial burden, we did pay for the improvements of the conduits, the digging up that were installed, that have been installed. It's ready, there's that issue in spare, spare conduits that FPL recommended and wanted, so we already paid for those improvements.
Okay, but if you, if this would have passed, so it will be kind of a financial relief for the applicant, because now who will have to pay for that? Will be the city, basically. When FPL is ready for the underground to continue, now we are the one who has to foot the bill. Am I correct?
Mr. City Manager, go ahead.
There was no condition of payment in the approval of the site plan, so even if it occurred in a timely fashion, they were not required to pay.
So, so right now, we don't know who has to pay for it?
You're gonna pay for it.
Anyway, regardless. Okay, so there is no financial burden for the applicant by then getting out of this condition?
No, because there was no, there was no, for some reason, there was no financial condition put in the actual approval of the project where they had to pay for it.
Okay, but what it says here is that they are the one who has to do the underground?
They had to have the underground done, correct, by FPNL, but there was no requirement that they actually pay for it.
Okay, but if that is a condition, it should be like implied, who has to do it? You know, so, which is, which is part of my question, you know? It affects the city because now for sure we have to pay for it. Maybe before it wasn't there, but now we have to pay for it. And, and I understand that you wanna have the certificate of occupancy, but it's a parking garage, so there is nobody living there anyway. And we have several buildings on the east side of the, still of the city. I believe Muse doesn't have the certificate of occupancy just yet. Where is that? Hundreds of people living. So I understand that you wanna finish it and enclose that chapter. I just don't see the need for this, to be honest. You know, maybe they see it in a different way. I do see that it is not good for the city to get into this. There were conditions agreed upon, I don't like when those conditions, then they change over time, which means and gives also the impression for the future that, okay, we can agree at the very beginning because we want the permit, and later on, we can just change those conditions and agreements. I don't think that set a good precedent, you know? I have three children, if I set the rules for one, it has to be for everybody, and I need to be consistent. And today, in the first meeting, we talked a lot about consistency, and I don't think this is consistent, what we, we have to do. I never spoke about this with anybody, but I read everything, and for the presentation and the application, et cetera. I don't see the need for this.
All right. Commissioner Joseph?
Yes, okay. So I have a question. So the problem here is that FPL just doesn't have the manpower to complete the project at this time?
In part correct. In our experience, when we've been dealing with FPL from the beginning, when we installed the conduits underlying, they ran into a standstill, they had a lot of turnover, there were a lot of events in the state of Florida that required their manpower and allocated their resources elsewhere. And, you know, over the last six months, we've been trying to accelerate them to get this project completed, and it's just, there's no, there's no end in sight.
Okay, so let me make it easy for you, because this is the same situation as Golden Shores. So Stan, why isn't IM, IAM coming in and completing this project?
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
That, there's different phases of the project, and FPNL cannot, like the gentleman was explaining, give us any kind of definitive timeframe for that. So there, the, the other item on the agenda where we're suggesting a contract with IM is for different connections throughout the city that will assist with Golden Shores. This is something completely separate.
Yes, I understand.
But to the point, we cannot get any kind of definitive timeframe from FPNL on when this is...
No, I understand.
My understanding is that FPNL has to do this work.
What?
The nature of the work, my understanding is the nature of the work that needs to be done here, FPNL has to do the work.
Yeah, but they are not here to answer...
Wait, 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 we're, we're going to keep order, so one person at a time, and please wait until I recognize you. So Commissioner Joseph, you have the floor, please go ahead.
So the work that needs to be completed here is different than the undergrounding work in Golden Shores? It seems to me that it's probably very similar.
It's similar, but it is different, yes. The work that we're proposing with IM is different connections, not related to this. And there's also phasing for the project from FPNL that they cannot give us any definitive timeframe on this. That's the issue.
Respectfully, if I may, I think the work that you're referring to with IM is work that we already performed on our site, right? They're gonna run conduits to make the connections, and then FPL at some point will have to run those conduit, or run those power lines and charge them. So that portion of the work, we've made a significant investment to provide those utilities, those conduits underground, so that, that work is already set.
Hold on, so you already have the PVC underground?
That's correct.
So you're just looking for the cables to be pulled, correct?
Correct, and energized.
Right. So then, isn't that what IAM is doing in Golden Shores?
IAM is doing some conduit work where there's some missing parts, and then that's part of their contract. The other part is the connections, yes.
So why can't they finish up here as well?
FPNL doesn't have a line underground yet. They're still overhead. That part of the work hasn't been done yet, so they have nothing to connect to. And IAM can't do that, FPNL has to do that. They've already done the work that, as the gentleman explained, that IAM would be doing in that sense, but there's nothing, there's nothing to connect to.
FPL is quite delinquent on a lot of their contracts. So don't we have any provisions to hold them to task?
They're the only power company in Florida.
Yes, I understand that. But don't we have any provisions to penalize them so that they get on it?
We could stop using them. All right, I'm gonna let someone else speak. Commissioner Viscara, you have the floor.
So Commissioner Cyvison actually raised the question that I had, because when I read it, it, I understood that the burden was on, was on the applicant. And that, so as I read it, and I didn't have the benefit of an individual meeting, so I'm just going on my own individual understanding, I understood that it was, I understand that that FPNL is the problem, right? So it's not you, like you've done everything you can, FPNL is the one who has to actually come in and do it, and you've done your part, and they haven't done it, and so you're, you're being held back on the certificate of occupancy. So, but as I was reading it, I always, as, my assumption was that, yeah, that, that the cost, that you would run with the cost, because it's drafted in a vague way. And so my question was gonna be, you know, are you going then to do it in the future when, when FPNL, if we, if we sign off on the certificate of occupancy, would the, would the new condition be that when FPNL is on track, that then you're gonna come in and do it? So that was question one, because of the vague language regarding the payment. And Commissioner Cyvison raised an interesting question for me, which is, how is the lack of the certificate of occupancy holding you back?
So to answer your first question, we are committed to the beautification, and we support the project that the city's taking to underground all the utility lines, we're not going anywhere, we, you know, we're tied to the estates. Everyone at Sunny Hills knows the estates, Jules Trump has been here for many years and will continue to. So I think our interest is also tied with yours in terms of getting those power lines under. So as we've been doing, we'll continue to cooperate and push FPL as much as possible, but I think it's, it's really, I think the two issues have to be decoupled in terms of getting the CO and running these lines, which, like I said, we have and other people have acknowledged, there is no end in sight. So right now, we're just kinda swimming in this vast ocean, not knowing where we're going. And if you can, I apologize, your other question?
How, how is the absence of the certificate of occupancy holding you back?
It's really an administrative burden that, I guess, has an impact on the city's resources, on our company's resources. We, we're on our fifth TCO extension, and it'd just be a continuous, you know, administrative roundabout for TCO, so...
So inconvenience?
It's an inconvenience.
An administrative inconvenience?
It is an inconvenience, there's some costs associated with that. You know, we'd like to have a CO close it out and decouple it from this condition that we have no control over. But like I mentioned, we're committed to this project for the city, we're owners of that garage, so it's not like we've turned it over to a third party where we have no interest. We have a very much interest that makes sure these power lines are put underground for the beautification of the project, beautification of the city, and our brand and reputation. So we're not going anywhere, we're committed to assisting the city in whichever way we can.
Okay, I'm, may I ask a question of the city manager? Do you, do you happen to know, 'cause I, I don't like to, you know, I don't like to throw stuff, but I, like I said, I didn't have the benefit of the individual meeting on this one, so... Is there a comparable situation that we've had with a different project that, where the under, the undergrounding became an issue? And, and if so, who paid? I'm, I'm separate from the homes, you know, like something else.
In the past, the work that was done along Collins, there were several variables that were considered in terms of the length of the lines for the project, but there was some type of owner participation in sharing the cost, but it varied.
And in this scenario, owner participation would be Aqualina. Some owner, some owner participation means some payment by, by the owner of the building, that's what that means?
Mayor Feckin?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. So this is a city undergrounding project. What was created back in the day, you all didn't do an assessment, you didn't do anything like that, you created a spreadsheet that had sort of a demarcation as to how much each person would pay. However, as the projects were getting approved, some voluntarily paid, some conditions of payment were put in the site plan approvals, others were not. This is one, one was not included. So the work essentially is a city, it's a city project, and my understanding is they've done all they can do, the, FPNL can't just come energize and bury their line, they have to go down the line. So there's other properties that are involved that haven't been done either yet that are holding them up. Obviously, it's all FPNL, and FPNL has to energize it. All the conduit, where all that stuff's been done, but it has to be energized and actually connected by FPNL, and that's what the holdup is. As to cost, though, it's been mix and match. Some have paid, some have not paid.
But it's not who has paid or who hasn't paid, it's who was supposed to pay. Like, some people will and some people won't, but who was supposed to?
That unfortunately...
Really, that's the question, and what you're saying is, because it's vague, the vagueness works against the city?
It does, because it's been inconsistently applied. Some of your approvals have had the condition where they have to pay, others have not. And, and this one is, does not have that in there. And again, most of the work has been done, the only thing that's left, all the works, not all the work, most of the work's been done and paid for, it's just the connectivity that needs to occur that only FPNL can do.
Which I understand, and I know that you've done your part. So my last question, again, I apologize because I didn't, wasn't able to discuss this in advance. Is this something that's, that we budgeted?
We did not.
So then this would... So then nobody, so nobody's, like on paper, there's no allocation for this, for this responsibility?
Or the city, no.
And neither, and neither the owner? So it's just in...
In the air.
In the air, yeah, okay.
Thank you, may I?
Why do we assume this cost might be?
Wait, 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 no, 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 hold on, we're gonna take turns.
And I guess my, my follow-up question to that would be, understanding that it's a city project, like, I, I don't know how this is not budgeted, if, we've been, we've budgeted undergrounding since, as far back as I can remember, so may, I don't know, maybe we need to look more closely at that, because I would have expected it to be budgeted. But if it isn't, then, and I know you may not have that number now, but then I'd like to know what that means. I guess that would have to be a budget amendment. I guess that would have to be a budget amendment. I'd like to know what, if not this part and there's other parts, like how much has not been accounted for? That we would need to know that. But, okay, like.
But if may I?
The vagueness works against the drafter, were we the drafter?
It's too far back, I presume so because it was a development, it was in the resolutions, so I presume it was, but it's, it's too far back, I wasn't involved.
Okay, I, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so my question is if FPL wouldn't have been behind and there wouldn't have been a hiccup and everything would have been done in a timely fashion for that connectivity, who would have ended up paying for it?
My understanding is the city would have.
The city would have, even though the contract that was drafted of the agreement is vague. It doesn't specify that the city.
Because it's a city project, it's your, it's your undergrounding project.
Okay.
And they paid for the conduits on their side and to get everything connected. But as to the FPNL responsibility in undergrounding, unless it's specified in their development order that they have to pay, it's essentially a city cost at that point. That's why it was inconsistent with some groups having to pay and other groups not.
And when you say groups, are you, we're talking specifically? Buildings or are we including in the houses in Golden Shores?
Golden Shores is a completely different thing that we're going to have to look at because that's, right now, you're footing the bill. And there probably should be an assessment, but there's a whole process you have to go through for an assessment.
Right now, I, I understand we're footing the bill, but also there's been talk about having some of the homeowners pay for the final connectivity.
For FPNL, well, that's something the city is going to have to determine. Because for AT&amp;T and Breeze Line, I believe they're charging the individual homeowners.
Okay.
On their own. From FPNL's standpoint, and that's something else I have a meeting with the city manager with next week, to determine how we're going to proceed forward with FPNL. Because why FPNL is not going and doing it themselves is one question. But to the extent that they're not and we're paying a contractor to do it, city's going to have to determine who's going to pay for that and how that's going to be achieved.
Okay, all right, so given that this has not been budgeted, even though we've been talking about the undergrounding project for a while and understand these things come up, but I, I would like to see states of Aqualina pay for that final connectivity and see if we could rework whatever agreement we have. And moving forward, you know, I think we need to be very specific, especially when we're talking about buildings, you know, ha- having them pay for it. You know, so I think that if we could have the states of Aqualina pay for that, you know, we'll give them the CO, but you know, once that other part of the project, you know, I understand you want to decouple it and I know why, I mean, you, you explained it very clearly, but I think that the payment should be made by, by the states of Aqualina.
And that would be voluntary on their part if they choose to do that, but you don't have a mechanism to force them.
No, no, I'm not talking about forcing them or anything, but, but sitting down at the table and, and trying to renegotiate something.
Okay, I just have two questions before I give the floor to Commissioner Stuyvesant. How much are we talking about here? What is the, the approximate amount? Ballpark? Ten thousand, twenty thousand? No, okay.
We don't, we don't.
Right, so the other, the other question is if there was an expectation for us to have been paying for this from the beginning based on our agreement, why wasn't it budgeted?
We do, we do have a general overall budget that you approved for our undergrounding project.
So it would cover this?
We have a gen, yes, but in terms of specifically for this, no.
But if our expectation was always to pay for this, then it would be inclusive?
So I, I just, look, it's, the, the cost is sixty-five thousand dollars and my understanding it has been budgeted. So that, yes, it has because it was part of our project.
Okay, so now we have clarification, it has been budgeted, sixty-five thousand dollars. But you're requesting that Aqualina pay for it even though it is budgeted? Now I'm going to give Commissioner Stuyvesant the.
Yes, I mean, if moving forward, we could have a policy where, especially, you know, we're talking about, you know, buildings on the east side of Collins or newer buildings that are luxury buildings, we could have them pay for that.
Okay.
Whether it's sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars. And, yeah, I think moving forward, we should have that policy and these agreements should be clear about that.
All right, Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Well, I do believe we had a similar issue last year with Turnberry on the ocean. They also have issues with certificate of occupancy and they have problems with FPL too. We had in June twenty twenty-four, we had that as a zoning hearing as well, which was deferred. They started communication with FPL and in the next very few months, it was solved. So maybe we can do the same thing, you know, defer the item or give a little bit more of time and more pressure to FPL. Everybody here is talking on behalf of FPL, but FPL is not here. So maybe there, you guys are next in the, in the to-do list, we, we don't know that, you know? So I don't like to talk on behalf of the people that is not, not present. So having said that, like I said before, it's a parking lot. And I know it has, for you guys, it's inconvenient and for the city as well to have those open certificates. And everybody wants to close all of them as soon as possible. I just don't see the need to change the rules of the contract. And hopefully we can have a way to read it in a manner that is more convenient to the city. And not that always the city is the one who has to be losing.
Respectfully, just to add on that, we've been dealing with FPL for quite some time, for months. So it's, it's nothing new that we're saying, oh, they can't resolve it now, we've been dealing with months. We, we deferred our last application thinking that it would come to a head now, but it just hasn't, they haven't been able to provide a timeline. So we don't know whether it will be in a year, six months, or somewhere in betweeners, or another, you know, another timeframe. But just to address a couple of question, a couple of remarks that I was hearing. So we have made significant investments in this project, we already put the underground conduits down there. We've, we've contributed to the Art and Public Places Fund. We've also made accommodations to have an antenna easement for the city to use to accommodate their accommodation needs. So we have done some, many investments in the project. And your concern was, will, will this set bad precedent for other developers? I think there's different factors. One, the language that's in the site plan resolution, it doesn't say that the developer is responsible for paying. And second, it should be analyzed on a case-by-case basis on what the applicant has done. In this case, we've provided the improvements underground, we've, we've had continued support for the city and we're, we want to continue to achieve this project. So we're still involved, we're not going away, we just want to decouple it.
Commissioner Joseph, did you want to?
Yes. So have you been dealing with upper echelon people at FPL or project managers or?
Both, we've, we've actually dealt with a series of project managers because there's a lot of turnover at FPL.
Right.
So each one, it's about reeducating them on where we are and what we need to do. We've, you know, we've used our, the resources that we have from Jules and Stephanie Trump
Yes.
with peoples at the top to try to get this project through, so we have been making efforts, it's just, it just hasn't culminated.
Well, if you'd like to share one of those phone numbers with me, I'll be happy to make a phone call.
Sure.
Um, I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
Um, again, Commissioner Stuyvesant brought up, I forgot about that Turnberry. We're talking about the one, it was just this little piece of, of, the one that just had like one little stretch of, of, of wires still left on Collins? Is that the one that you were talking, well?
In, in the trees, in the coconut trees.
Yeah, yeah, that one, okay. So, so what, and in the end, FPNL, we didn't need the, they, they fixed it before, they had to come back, I remember now, okay. So I would be, I, I would like to know like how that one worked.
It, they, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how did that one work?
They, they paid because it was in their condition of approval that they paid.
So, so that agreement?
Wait, 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 wait.
Right, so we were drafting different contracts for different people, okay. Got it.
Okay. Before Vice Mayor gets up, I wanted to ask Amy, if you can come up, please, and explain why you brought this item in front of us and how, and how, and if this is different and why you're making this recommendation? Because I think there's some questions here, they're not answered.
So just to clarify, Turnberry didn't pay the city, what they did was they had an application to remove this condition and then they deferred the item and then within a few months, they worked with FPL to have the lines underground. That was a different kind of issue. What happened with that one was there was a property further north where they were supposed to have a dedicated transformer, but another site took that transformer. And so they had to do some work with, working around that specific issue to get them underground. So Turnberry worked directly with FPL and then they no longer needed that condition. So the, what did come before you was the variance to reduce the number of street trees. So when it came before you, there was no issue about the undergrounding. Just specific to this project, the, the developers have done everything in their purview that they can to get this undergrounding work done. What they're waiting on is work that needs to be done further north in the corridor along Atlantic Boulevard. And as Jerry has said, they've done, they've undergrounded their conduit, that's as mo- the most that they can do. There is another item on this agenda to add sixty-five thousand dollars to the project to help with finishing the phase three of the undergrounding, which includes this development site. That sixty-five thousand is for the whole corridor, it's not only for their project site. And lastly, the underground project is budgeted, there's twenty-nine million dollars in the budget already to satisfy the undergrounding work.
And if you can clarify, you said up north, how north are we talking about? Because we're then up north.
To one eighty-five, so all the way up to Publix, Atlantic Boulevard.
So will that include?
Up to one eighty-five.
So that includes Atlantic, the school?
Um, the power lines are on the east side of the road.
Okay.
So they run adjacent to the RK Plaza and then our property.
I see.
And then it runs further south, so they're not the only ones affected in this phase three of the project.
Okay.
And the reason I brought this before you is because we feel the developer really has done everything in their purview to get them underground. We're just waiting on FPL to make those connections further north. And they're asking for some secondary conduit line, but not where this project is located.
Okay, thank you, so you're recommending it, okay. If there aren't any further questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I need a second, please.
Second.
Okay, Mauricio?
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuyvesant?
No.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The application is approved for the one.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, before we move on to the next item, because we did have additions and we had a deferral, I just want to make sure that for those in the audience, please go fill out a public speaker's card for any of the items. If you choose not to speak, you just can say, I, I changed my mind. It just makes it a lot easier so that we are very deliberate in our actions today and it's very clear and it's fair for everyone, okay? Next item, please.
Next section is ordinance first reading, six says an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash six eighteen, approving budget amendment number BA twenty-four twenty-five dash O three to the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is our third budget amendment and this is part of our year-end closeouts regarding our fund balance, some purchase order carryovers, creating the procurement department that you allowed for the last meeting and some transfers out of the general fund and other budget-related items.
And we discussed this during the agenda review, but just for clarification, before I ask if there's any public speakers, the, the increase for the, the allocation rather, for the additional manager, we anticipate that's going to be offset by the savings in, in having someone manage those contracts exclusively, is that correct? I just want that on the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Vice Mayor, would you like to start if you have any questions?
No question.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Viscara? Commissioner Joseph?
No, no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Stuyvesant? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mauricio?
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Your ordinance passes on first reading, second reading will be scheduled for March.
Okay, next item, please.
Ordinance for second reading. Eight A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash six eighteen, approving budget amendment number BA twenty-four twenty-five dash O two to the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is our second reading of our budget amendment from last month. It includes installing cameras in the elevators at Government Center and allocating some funds for the storage shed at the Lehman.
Great, thank you, do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right, are there any comments or questions from the commission?
No.
I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Your ordinance is adopted.
Eight B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter twenty-two of the Code of Ordinances entitled City Departments Created to eliminate the Development Services Department, creating the Procurement Department, creating the Innovation and Technology Department, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the second reading of our ordinance eliminating Development Services Department, establishing the Procurement Department and creating the Innovation and Technology Department in the city.
Great, thank you, do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I'll take a motion then.
No, motion.
Second.
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Okay, now we're on to resolutions. Nine A, just a reminder, we have an addition of nine M and deferral of nine L in case anybody wanted to sign up to speak.
Nine A is a resolution declaring zoning in progress relating to the mixed-use resort district, town center district, neighborhood business district and business overlay districts.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this will extend our current zoning in progress for another three months. And as you know, we have some workshops planned for you very soon so that you can give us further direction on our zonings.
Okay, do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
When is that first workshop, just for the, the audience to know?
It's next week, but what day I don't know.
Monday, right? Twenty-fourth, I believe.
Yes, Monday and Friday.
Okay, and we're going to be pushing that out?
Yes.
Okay, great, no public speakers?
No public speakers.
Any comments or questions from the commission? I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, next item.
Nine B is a resolution approving the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Arboc Low floor shuttle bus for Model One commercial vehicles.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is approval to purchase a low-floor shuttle bus, which is definitely in need for our fleet. There, this was based on a piggyback contract from the Florida Department of Transportation. There is a thirty-six-month, thirty-six-thousand-mile warranty. And if you approve this, it would still be a year before we receive the bus. There's a year lead time.
So for clarification, in twenty twenty-six, it will be a twenty twenty-five bus?
Yes.
Okay, do we have public speakers, Mauricio?
No, ma'am.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
So I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Joseph.
This hundred eighty-eight thousand, does that reflect a cost savings regarding a twenty twenty-five? Or is it just, that's what, that's our penalty for having to wait that long?
There's no penalty, it's just a, it's just a delay.
I don't mean penalty.
Right, that's, that's the cost of what it is.
That it just takes that long to get it.
Yes, right now because of the supply and demand, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, next item.
Nine C is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Policing with Passion.
City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is a first amendment with policing with. This is a first amendment with Policing with Passion. They have assisted us with oversight in our police department and more specifically, dealing with our red light camera installation and, um, program.
Okay.
And the cost of this would be, our projections are, would be covered by the red light camera program.
All right. Do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
And just so that, um, since we have an opportunity to remind the public where they are, the red light cameras, if we can just.
Various intersections throughout the city. Sorry, Mayor. I can't tell you specifically, but just don't run any red lights.
Well, I thought we were going to be very transparent about it, is my point. So I just, I, I haven't gotten any complaints at, at all about this. So only good thing. So.
Please use the ways.
Okay. All right. Uh, no public, uh, speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I have a question regarding, uh, Policing with Passion.
You're recognized.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. City Manager, um, the, um, purpose of Policing with Passion, I know they've done a great job on so many issues. What is the, um, what, going forward? What is the, um, uh, purpose that you might be using them for in the future? Do you, is this an ongoing relationship that we're to have after the accreditation and all?
I feel like, yes. When this, when I first contracted with Paul, um, now two years ago.
He's done a great job.
Thank you.
Yes.
We, I really needed an independent person that was outside the agency to come in and do a full assessment. And that I relied on Paul from, who met with you individually to give you some of the challenges we've had in the police department. Those concerns have been, I would say, implemented. And change has been significant, including adding of eighteen new police officers, as well as promoting the chief and assistant chief. So from this perspective, I'm using him to help with the implementation of the red light camera program, but also to provide general oversight and guidance to our chief and assistant chief.
Okay. So is that something that the chief will, uh, require going forward? Or is there a time when, you know, the chief may, you know, not need that assistance?
Well, I think the G- chief has done an excellent job. He has exceeded, uh, our expectations for all of us. That being said, I still like to have the oversight and someone with many years of experience and wisdom guiding him. So at, at the point where the chief feels like we have reached that, then he and I would have a discussion and I would bring that back to you.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And again, I want to reiterate, Paul has done a great job for the city and we all appreciate it, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Take a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item.
Ninety is a resolution approving an off-system construction and maintenance agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to perform pedestrian safety improvements from south of State Road eight-twenty-six to north of one-seventy-eighth Street and Collins Avenue.
City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. We had substantial discussion about this at the workshop, but essentially in order for the Florida Department of Transportation, or FDOT, to come in and perform some safety improvements in walkways throughout the city, they're requiring us to enter into a maintenance agreement with them. So in order for that project to move forward, we're bringing this to you for authority.
Okay. Um, do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Um, all right. Before we go on to, um, the commission, when we discussed this at the agenda review, it was not clear where exactly, um, they would be looking to make those improvements and what specifically do we think they're going to be doing. I know that there was a discussion about making, um, crosswalks more ADA compliant. Uh, can you just give a little bit more detail before we get to the commission's questions as to their proposed work?
Yes.
What we think they're going to do?
Yes. They're going to do crosswalk and improvements on one-seventieth Street, one-seven-two Street, one-seven-four, and one-seven-eight. They're going to be upgrading them to make them more, um, accessible, compliant, and in line with current standards.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Yes. So.
Please go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. So during the, uh, gender review, I had asked if, at this time since we have to agree, um, and sign for F, FDOT, if there was anything else in the city that might need, um, upgrading that we could ask, ask them to do. Um, and I was told that there really wasn't anything. But then it came to my attention that over, uh, walking around by the causeway, it's very unsafe where people can walk just across the street at any time and, and not getting over, not waiting to get over to the crosswalk. If there was some type of guard rail that could be put on the curb to prevent people from jaywalking over in that particular area where people are coming off the causeway. It's a very dangerous area there.
I will certainly ask them if they can do that.
Okay.
I do not, I do not know the answer to that.
Take a motion then?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item, please.
Ninety is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Nunez Construction for the installation of an emergency generator and building restoration at Gateway Community Center.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. This is our first amendment with Nunez. As we get into doing restoration work at Gateway Park, discovering some things that need to be rectified and corrected that were improper during the original construction. For example, large buildup of stucco walls in areas that we're trying to repair. So this amount will help us to assist to do it the right way.
Okay. Um, before we get to any public speakers, during the agenda review, there was a, um, a request to, um, give an update on what the total cost is. Were you able to get that information?
It was text to us.
Yeah. We got the. Oh, it's a te- oh, oh. Well, then for the record, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But it's quite upsetting when you look at the numbers.
Well, I'm glad I didn't look at it.
I, we sent you, when we go through our agenda workshops for any questions that we have, we do compile that information and we did email it to you. But I can review it if, so that if you would like.
Just the amount.
The amounts.
I don't need you to read the entire email.
No. I could, I could just read the amounts, but there's a few of them.
Okay.
So for Gateway, the land purchase was thirteen-point-five million. The garage and park construction was twenty-one million. The Gateway pedestrian bridge was two-point-seven. The interior buildout was six-point-five million. Gateway generator is one-point-five million. Gateway restoration, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. And the gate, and then the other subsequent question, I think that you all had asked at the workshop, was what our projected revenue was from parking to try to do some offset. For fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, our parking revenue was two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-eight-eight-five.
For that parking lot? Okay.
And it went down in, in the next year, correct? By half?
We're in our.
Wait, wait. We need to just, first, I want to see if there's any public comment. Just hold on.
There's no public comment.
None? Okay. Now you're recognized. Go ahead.
So the, the, uh, income from the parking went down by about half in the next year?
Right now, we're, we're only into a couple of months of our new fiscal year and we've collected a hundred-and-five thousand.
Okay. So it's, so it will be higher?
I believe it will be. Yes.
So that's because our rates went up, correct?
That's true.
Our rates did not, our rates went up on the beach. So maybe what's happening is people are falling back to Gateway. We raised the rates for parking at our two beach parking areas by a dollar, but not for our interior parking.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Take a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item, Mauricio?
Nine F is a resolution approving a third amendment to the agreement with I Am Electric for street lighting preventive maintenance and as-needed electrical services.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the co- commission. As Commissioner Joseph brought up earlier, this is a contract with I Am Electric. We need them to do some, this is our phase-three connection at one-seventy-eight Central Island in the Atlantic Corridor for sixty-five thousand. There's some areas of conduit that need to be placed in order for the connectivity.
Do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Comments from the commission? Take a motion then?
Well, so they're doing as-needed work in this area. But I guess because there's additional work on Atlantic, north of, um, the garage, that they can't do that work there?
So what happened is, we went out a couple of years ago with an invitation to bid for companies. And I Am Electric was one of the companies that we selected as bidders. So when we have projects like this, we're able to use them to do work like this.
Right.
And they have been very responsive so far.
Okay. So they're doing then the same work that FPL would do, basically?
They're, no. They're doing, they're actually installing sections of conduit that needs to be done. FPNA really just, um, runs the wires, but not the conduit for this work. This is part of our project.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Nine G is a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the agreement with Amusement Source.
City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. This is the company that we use for ride rental services for city-sponsored events. Uh, we have an initial term with this company of two years with three additional one-year renewal. Uh, we've been very satisfied with this company. Therefore, we want to exercise our final renewal option from March of this year to March of next year. So we're requesting an additional ninety thousand, bringing the total contract not to exceed four-seventy-five.
Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any comments, questions from the commission?
Um, I just have a question regarding, uh, the safety and, um, how they, uh, safeguard their equipment. So I know the state has, um, is talking about, uh, legislation regarding these types of rides and all. So what safeguards do we have to make sure that they're in good condition and kept up?
I would have to get you additional information on that specifically. What I can tell you that we require is we work with our insurance broker, but this is one of the main components that the city attorney, the purchasing director, and I look at for all of these contracts in terms of having the proper insurance. I know that's not answering your question, but I will, I will research that and, and let you all know specifically.
Good.
Okay. I'll take a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item?
Nine H has a resolution approving an agreement with Neon Sign Solutions for the removal of fabrication and installation of monument signs throughout the city.
City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. This continues our upgrading of essentially, you know, city parks, landmarks, those kinds of things. This is for all, this approval will be for our citywide monument signs. And we're showing you on the monitors, though you've seen it before, some of the concepts of what the signs are going to look like. So we contacted Dade County and they had eleven vendors. And we put them out, asking them if they wanted to bid on this. Came back, Dade County had advertised a request to qualify for these companies. There were eleven there, two were responded to us, and this was the less expensive of the two. And this project is anticipated to take, uh, between one to two years to complete.
Okay. And just.
You see some of the signage on your monitors of what is existing versus what is proposed.
And just for the record, um, how many signs does this include?
Eighteen or something? Was it like fourteen? I think so.
Something like that.
Nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers, Mauricio?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any comments from the commission?
No.
Take a motion, please?
I, I, I'd just like to comment something. So.
Go ahead.
Um, moving forward, we need to be mindful and we need to see whenever we're looking at signage and these sort, sort of things that have our logo and our IP, we need to see how we could repurpose these so we, we don't have that expenditure of a million dollars every, every five years. So, you know, the, these things could be designed in a way where you could repurpose them without, um, you know, having to, to replace them. And we, we could save ourselves some money.
Refurbish?
Not refurbish. No, no, no. So there's a way of designing something where if you need to change our logo or our tagline, you could change it without kind of.
Oh, I see.
I, I don't know exactly what's, what this entails, but we need to, moving forward, be cognizant of that. So we don't have to replace something and something new. We could repurpose it.
Okay. I think, I think what Vice Mayor is saying is that when they're going to be building these out, there's an opportunity to have sections where we have our logo to be able to change it without having to change the entire sign.
Yeah. I, I think we need to look at that. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I'll take a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Nine I?
A resolution amending resolution number ninety-eight dash thirty-four to include Friday, May ninth, twenty-twenty-five as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and thereafter the Friday before National Police Week as an observed holiday.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. This item is being presented to you in appreciation for the work that our police department does. And it's a matter of this day is recognized as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And it would be May ninth of twenty-twenty-five and thereafter would be the Friday before National Police Week. And it would be observed as a holiday in the city of Sunny Hills Beach. There are a number, the Dade County observes this as well as Golden Beach, Palmetto Bay, Cutler Bay, Miami Dade Clerk, Comptroller, and the Eleventh Judicial Circuit of Florida. It's for you all to approve. and the Eleventh Judicial Circuit of Florida. It's for you all to approve.
The irony is, is that while most of the city staff is going to have off that day, there's going to be police that are going to still have to work. Um, okay. Mauricio, do we have any public speakers? Any comments or questions from the commission? I'll take a motion please?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item please?
Thank you.
Nine J is a resolution expressing support for Senate Bill two dash C relating to immigration enforcement.
Okay, this is my item. So I had asked Mauricio to put this on before it was signed by the governor. It's, it's already passed, but this is just our support of what the legislature has presented to the governor. The governor has signed it, and it basically means that we will, in all ways possible, work with the state to, to help them enforce any laws that, that are passed regarding immigration, and that our police department will be very involved as well. Do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I, I have a couple of questions, so-
Go ahead.
I, I spoke with the city attorney, and, and I just wanted to make sure that there's no, no provisions here that would go against the Constitution of the United States. So city attorney, if you could just, you know, based on our last conversation, and I know you went through this, has anything come up where you could tell that it goes against the Constitution of the United States?
I mean, I, it's a difficult question to answer, because it really depends who you ask. I suspect there's going to be a slew of people that will deem, or at least try to assert that something's unconstitutional within the, the bill. It's, it's a lengthy bill. It just got passed on Friday, well, the governor signed it on Friday, so I haven't heard of any challenges as of yet. But it, it's a difficult question to answer as to whether, nothing hits me in the face and causes me great concern with the constitutionality of it. I suspect probably most of the challenges may come with the augmentation of sentencing for some. Most are related to gang members as defined by the statute, but there are some graduating sentencing and, and degree, you know, the, the degree of felonies may be augmented based on the immigration status. So I think that's something that may get challenged, but it, it's impossible to tell.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because one of my concerns was, I mean, there's augmented, let's say, offenses there, augmented punishments that, I'm concerned if there's an immigrant that's in legal process following the law, and they do something, you know, not serious, but there's an augmented penalty for that. I wonder if that's constitutional, so I'm, I'm, I'm just, you know, thinking out loud here.
Vice Mayor, this, the, the spirit of this is really to deter serious crime that is committed, and I believe anyone that's in, and I'm not an attorney, so Mr. Attorney, please correct me, but anyone is in the process of getting their immigration status, regardless if they commit a crime, they normally, as far as I understand, they, they're not able to continue. So I, I don't think this is going to necessarily hurt anyone in any way that they wouldn't already have some sort of repercussion.
No, I understand, but I just wanted to make sure it does not go against the Constitution of the United States.
Yeah, and I think that that's going to be discussed at length.
Yeah, yeah, so that is, that is my main concern. I understand this is just a resolution, you know, it's not an ordinance, but obviously we're obliged to support any state and federal law that is passed. So I, I, I just hope this does not go against the Constitution. So I guess time will tell.
I would say that just for your own edification, if you haven't read it, that there are provisions in there that for, I guess, targeting jurisdiction, local jurisdictions that choose to purposely defy any efforts by ICE or immigration to enforce federal law, that they, there are penalties against you personally. I think it's up to five thousand dollars per, including possible suspension. So cooperation is the key.
No, no, I understand that, and, and obviously we'll, we'll cooperate, but I, I was just concerned on that part, you know, the constitutionality of this, and just to make sure that we're supporting something that does fall within the, you know, Constitution of the United States. So that's all.
Okay, any other questions?
And just basically, I think it's anti-sanctuary city. So, no, I don't believe anyone wants Sunny Isles Beach to be a sanctuary city.
No, yeah, I, I understand that. It's just that, you know, it's like the attorney said, it's a lengthy, you know, bill, and there's a few things that, you know, jumped out at me when, when, when-
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I just want to say that probably with the, I think only Commissioner Joseph is the only person on this day that was actually born in the United States, and so I think that all of us can-
I was born here.
You were?
Yeah, raised in Osalo.
Oh.
I'm a gringo.
Your accent, okay. All right, well, then the, the three women here understand the, the hardship and the importance and what you go through to become a citizen of this country, doing it the correct way, and that's what I think the, the point of this is, is to support that.
No, no, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that we're not going against the Constitution.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
But I do have relatives that came through Ellis Island.
Defend the Constitution of the United States, so that's my-
You, you actually-
We all did.
You took an oath, so yes.
That's right.
All right, I'll take a motion?
I know, I, I do comment also.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I, I started my career as an immigration attorney, so I have some background, and I have not read the whole fifty pages, but I'm still in those circles, and there are concerns about, there are some constitutional concerns there, and it will likely, I mean, right now, it was passed, so it's law, but it's effective already, right, but it's, it's, I expect that it will be challenged. And again, I haven't read the whole thing, I have not had the time, but what, the pieces I've seen, I, I do believe that there's unconstitutional pieces in it. So I, on that, I would not support it, because I do share those concerns.
All right.
I will make a motion.
I need a second?
I'll second it. We'll see if any challenges come up, and it's within the, you know, boundaries of the Constitution of the United States.
All, all in favor?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner-
I'm a no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next item please?
Yes.
Nine K is a resolution expressing support for Florida Senate Bill two twenty-six prohibiting smoking in public places.
All right, Commissioner Joseph, this is your item.
This is my baby, and it's close to my heart. I've been working on this within Sunny Isles for the past three years, going around to certain restaurants, which, and, and some have agreed to post my no smoking signs, secondhand smoke. I have friends who have spouses, one spouse smokes, and the other, I have instances where the spouses passed away from breathing in of the secondhand smoke over a lifetime. So we have in Sunny Isles, we have restaurant, some restaurants that have overhangs that are actually considered indoor space, but there is still smoking allowed, which unfortunately, Florida does not have the manpower at this time to enforce the no smoking. So some of these areas, I won't name names, but these restaurants allow smoking where they shouldn't, because there's nowhere for the smoke to escape. So I'm glad to see that this bill expands the term "public places", and that would basically allow for no smoking in public restaurants and, and such. So in that regard, I support this bill one hundred percent, and I'm asking the commission to do the same.
Do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
I agree. I mean, secondhand smoking is terrible, and we need to protect the, the residents, for sure.
And workers, restaurant workers, you don't realize how they're so susceptible to the secondhand-
For the clarification, because I think that, you know, this is interesting, that this is a bill sponsored by Senator Ruters, who also sponsored the no smoking on, on the beach. And he's a staunch, you know, Republican, who normally would say, you know, let people do what they need to do, or what they want to do. So specifically for the public restaurants, you know, all, most of our restaurants are within the RK plazas.
Yes.
So if this becomes law, whether we support it or not, doesn't really matter, but can you please clarify, does that include the restaurants within the RK Plaza because it's technically private property? That's what I need to-
That would be public places would be included, restaurants would be included. The law specifically said, mentions restaurants.
Okay, so restaurants like, I'm just thinking of those that do have a lot of smokers, like El Tropico, Manhattan Bakery, those places, just if I can just get the city attorney to, to clarify.
I haven't read the bill, this particular bill, but previous bills have been, any restaurant, typically where food is going to be served, would be restricted, there'd be no smoking.
Even outside?
Correct.
Let me just say, under the current law, if you take El Tropico, for instance, where it has an overhang, currently-
They all do have overhangs.
Well, yes, but the current law states that any area that is fifty percent covered is considered inside space, where smoke cannot escape. So actually, those restaurants with an overhang are considered indoor space, but there's no enforcement.
Okay.
So there's actually, under state law now, there is no smoking in those areas, but there's just no enforcement.
All right, got it.
But does the issue, the enforcement issue?
Yeah. All right, take a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Now we have nine L is deferred, we have nine M, and that'll be me.
It's a resolution expressing opposition to Florida House Bill three oh one relating to sovereign immunity.
So we discussed this very, very briefly at, in the discussion items earlier today, and this is a, one of those, the FLC, they call some the zombie bills, because they don't die, they just keep coming back year after year. And so here we are again. I, I would, thank you to the city clerk for putting this together very quickly, I do appreciate it, so we can vote on something that's in front of us. The amount, though, are, are wrong. The, they're looking to, to increase from two hundred per person per incident to one million, so that's five times increase.
That's the first warehouse was?
The, so, in the first warehouse, so like, it's going from two hundred, it's not going from two hundred to four hundred, but that would be double, right, so, which is still too much, but they're actually saying it's going from two hundred to a million, and then the three hundred per incident is going to three million, so that's ten times. We, in our discussion with the advocacy committee, they said that even if you, if you account for, I forgot what that index is called, is it CPI at the index? That, is that right? Okay. Yeah, that one. Okay, so if you, if you were to account for that, it wouldn't, the increase would not be anywhere near this, and it's, if, if it's from two hundred, it goes to maybe two eighty. Like, if you were just accounting for that to keep it the same, so, like, the numbers are ridiculous. And of course, what this does is, it increases our liability, which means it increases our, our insurance rates, and inevitably, it increases litigation, because when there's a, a bigger pot to go after, and people fall more, right, that's, it's sort of, I'm sure there's a chart about that somewhere. So, so that's what this is, we're looking to oppose it, and we opposed it last year and the year before that, and we'll see if it finally dies this year.
Do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay, I just want to remind the public, if you wanted to speak, this was an add-on item, so I want to give you another opportunity. No, okay. And just, before I open the floor to the dais, you can please clarify, what do you think the chances are, based on the history?
They're gonna fight it. Last year, it, last year it did well, because over the negotiations, the numbers became very reasonable. I actually thought it would pass. And I think it, it may be that the governor vetoed it, or, or in the end it just, oh, no, I know what it was. It was like, the, the numbers were negotiated on both sides, the House and the Senate, and, and they came close, but they didn't quite get it together, and then it ended up fizzling out. So I think there's broad agreement that some increase is warranted, but how the negotiations go, and if they get on the same page, is really anybody's guess.
So besides us passing a resolution, is there anything else we can do to support what you're doing?
This is on the FLC's agenda, and it's actually in our conversations that we've had with Ron Book's office, and, and our own, trying to build our, our legislative program. This is one of the top five. So we'll be, not just, I brought it as a resolution because we were meeting, and it just came, came up, but we'll be, we'll be attacking it. And then we'll, it's one of the things that we'll ask residents to chime in on as well.
Great, okay. No public speakers, correct, Mauricio?
No ma'am.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
No.
I, I just hope this, this fails, because, I mean, imagine, we have some municipalities where their budget is not even a million dollars, so this will bankrupt municipalities. I mean, there's some municipalities that are close to here that don't even have a three million dollar budget, small cities, where, you know, this just doesn't make sense. I mean, and, and whoever proposed this is aware, should be aware, that municipalities, small ones, don't, don't even have the budget to cover a claim.
That's the strongest argument, right, because these, these things apply statewide.
Exactly.
And so if you're, yeah, a very wealthy city, maybe you can take the hit, an increase in your, in your, in your premiums, but nobody wants that anyway, but it can act, literally bankrupt a city. And also you have the self-insured cities like Orlando, and I think, there was another one, A Plantation, I think is another one, where they just pay out of their reserves. So, anyway.
Okay, do you want to make a motion on your item?
I will make my motion.
All right, need a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is ten, do we have a number for it, Mauricio?
Eight, ten A.
Ten A, okay. So to, to clarify, and I want to make sure that I, again, make it very clear, we're going to follow Roberts rules here, as well as our rules of decorum. I'm going to ask the, the dais and my colleagues to please follow those rules, wait until I give you the floor and acknowledge you, and I'm going to need the city attorney and the city clerk to help with this process, because of the chaos from January, we left something on the table that we shouldn't have. A motion was made by Commissioner, Commissioner Stivison, correct, and seconded by Commissioner Joseph to censure me. So I want to know procedurally, how do we go about this, so that we can sort of close that loop and make sure that this is done correctly?
Well, you started off by having the commission agree to add this motion to the agenda, which has occurred, so it's in order.
Okay.
Pursuant to your procedures, before, the, the motion needs to be clearly stated as to what it is. And then at that point, as you do with all your other items, you take public comment, and public comment is done, then you can deliberate on the motion.
All right, and so despite the fact that I brought this back on, are we asking for the motion to be made by the original person that made the motion? How does this work so that it's directly-
Well, you can't make a motion, right?
Right, but this is true too, okay.
So by, by that operation, if somebody, if it's the same motion, then maybe it can be restated-
Okay.
As it was, and clarified as to what exactly the motion is, so that the public can comment, and if there is public comment, and then, so the commission can deliberate.
All right.
So if I could just say, have we clarified the, this number, so that people can-
It's ten A, yes, it's ten A.
Okay, so anyone that wants to make a comment, it would be ten-
Commissioner Joseph, I asked in the beginning that we follow Roberts rules, so please do that, so that we start off on the right foot and do this correctly. So please wait until you're recognized. Commissioner Stivison, you made the original motion.
I don't have my notes with me, because I wasn't prepared for this, but it was a motion about abuse of power. So I don't have it with me, I don't know if you have it, to read it back?
I don't have it with me.
I don't have it with me, but yeah, that's the motion I made about abuse of power. Yes.
Okay, is that, is that, one second, please?
Yes.
Again, you, you said the-
I repeated.
No, 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 I know. Commissioner Joseph, please. Mr. City Attorney, is, do we need more clarity than that?
We do, because it's, it, it, it's, has to be some kind of action, a motion to what? It's, is it, you need to sort of specify what the motion is going to be, what, what it is that's being requested be deliberated, so abuse of power is, I don't know.
So Commissioner Stivison, do you want to let Commissioner Joseph make the motion then? Because it seems like he's jumping out of his seat, so please, would you like to make the motion?
Well, yes, I'll make the motion.
Then you're recognized.
Thank you. And I believe, and Fabiola can assist if I miss anything, since it was her motion originally.
You're making the motion now, so.
Okay, but from what I recall, there was a motion for, regarding abuse of power, and for a censure, a resolution of censure, regarding the fact that there was a mural wall across from the school on RK property that had been painted over, and RK was told to paint it over.
Let me just interrupt you. It just needs to be the motion, not the debate. So we're not discussing the facts right now, or, I need you to make the motion so that then we can then have the discussion.
Okay, so, do you recall what your motion is?
It was a motion to censor the mayor for abuse of power.
There you go.
Thank you so much, but I don't have it with me right now.
Is that enough?
That's, yeah.
That's enough, okay.
Okay, perfect, so then we can get into the details.
All right, so then I need a second?
And I will second.
Okay, so procedurally?
I'm, I'm so sorry, I just need to clarify, because I have that Commissioner Joseph is making the motion, so I need someone else to second.
Okay.
Commissioner Stivison then made the motion.
I made the motion.
So then, Commissioner Joseph is seconding.
Okay, we can open up for public comment.
All right, please do.
Isaac Feldman?
And I just, I, I want to remind everyone again, I brought my gavel that I got from the previous mayor, thank you, Norman. I, I've never used it, but given what happened last month, I want to make sure that I never use it. You each have three minutes to speak. Please address all your comments to me, the chair. I, I'm going to ask you to refrain from any abusive language, you know, we're keeping to decorum, we're going to do this the right way, so that we can get through this and close this door. So please, go ahead. Your name and address for the record, please. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Isaac Feldman, one seventy-seven Collins Avenue. Uh, good evening, honorable mayor, and commissioners, and the staff. Um, I'm gonna speak as the business owner in the city. I'm in the city business owners since nineteen ninety-one, long before it became a city. And until today, I work almost with every mayor in the city, including the first one. Mayor Adel Cup, seven years on these committees. And, uh, I try to, to be available and volunteer as much as I can with the current city. What's, what's happening, I'm gonna read a sto- a short statement, and then I'm gonna say something about it. Okay, I come here to be heard. As a business owner, who you all know, and I am, and all of us are fed up, fed up with the constant fighting, the divisiveness, and the political games, that seem to take pre- precedence over the real issues facing our community. The motion to censure our mayor is yet another example of how personal agendas are being placed ahead of the progress we've worked so hard to build together. Under the mayor's leadership, our city has been growth, has seen growth and stability that businesses like mine rely on. She has fought to add resources to our police force, ensuring safety to our family and our businesses. More than that, she worked with this commission, no matter the politics, to make sure that our community continues to thrive. But now, we are wasting time on motion that serves no one. It doesn't serve the businesses, the families, or the future of the city. All it does, it creates more division, more frustration, and more doubt in the leadership we need to keep the city moving forward. This is what you all were elected to do, to represent our interest. As a business owner, I know how important stability is. Many leadership will work together, who will put aside differences and fight for the things that matter. Safety, growth, and a prosperous future for everyone. Censuring the mayor, who has been a tireless advocate for our community, is not the solution. It's a step backwards. I urge you to put aside the politics and focus on what really matters. Let's come together, support the process of, we've made, and work forward uh, toward a future that benefits us all. Good, that is my statement. Now, as far as the, the, the issue itself, okay? None of you were in that meeting, okay? None of you know, including honorable, uh, Mayor Adel Cup, which I adore, and is my friend. Uh, I was in that meeting, okay? And I can, being as a witness here, firsthand witness, being in that meeting with Mr. Ranon Katz, and Danny Katz, I, I need just to finish, it's an important statement. And, uh, we were sitting in a meeting, talking completely different issues that, um, that I brought up, that we all brought up, that, uh, was concerning with RK Plaza, with, with, uh, Ranon Katz and Danny. And during our talk, we were talking about, generally about the city, about the school. So the, the mayor, uh, made a comment that the wall looks bad. To which Danny offered, would you like us to paint over that, uh, that wall? To what the mayor answered, that will be great. She did not ask anybody to do anything. She did not abuse any power without any permission, or any talk to the commissioners. She just mentioned a fact. She was offered, but RK that owns the plaza and, and the wall, okay? And she just answered, that will be great. That's exactly what happened. I can swear on the Bible, if you need, or anything else, but I was a firsthand witness. And what's happening now, it shouldn't happen. Because the city constantly in chaos. My good friend, Annabelle Lima Talib, here, the commissioner and vice mayor previous?
Finish up, please.
Yeah, of, of Howlandale, I was in their meetings. And it's a pleasure to see all the harmony, all the, how it's clicking. It's constantly chaos, that created by some of the commissioners here, okay? It has to be working, you guys working for us, for the city. Not only personal agendas, your personal, uh, politics, it has to be for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Annabelle Lima Taub. This is absurd.
Good evening, everyone. Um, off topic for a quick moment, I just wanted to correct something, respectfully. Madam Mayor, um, Shari Vivas was not, uh, handed over by Hamas today. It was a coffin with an anonymous body. Um, and that is, uh, that is Hamas for you. I originally intended, um, to come before you tonight, because I wanted to introduce an incredible, um, individual, who is the Vice Mayor of Sharaat, which is our sister city, uh, in Israel. Uh, October seventh survivor and a hero, who saved many Ukrainian lives and Russian lives, um, on October seventh and October eighth. But here we are on a different, um, topic. Um, some of you might wonder why I'm here. I live in Howlandale Beach, I also serve in Howlandale Beach. We have residents in Howlandale Beach that own businesses in Sunny Isles Beach. And we have business owners in Sunny Isles Beach that live in Howland, um, in Sunny Isles, that live in Howlandale Beach. Um, censuring is an embarrassment. You have a two billion, with a B, dollar hedge fund, run out of an office here in Sunny Isles Beach. You have legislatures in, uh, in the state of Florida, that are talking about eliminating property taxes. This is how you fund and pay for everything in the city, correct? The tax dollars, property tax dollars, go into our coffers, respectively. This antics, these political antics, will only serve to get people to get out of Sunny Isles, and come invest in my city, and invest in other cities. But I'm here as one woman to another. I've been in your position before, where I've had four against one. It's an embarrassment, and I just want to tell you that your reputation, all across, we, we gave you a, a key to our city, in Howlandale Beach, because of your accomplishments, because of the work that you're doing and the advocacy. If you keep getting censured by individuals here, because of whatever political antics, and thuggery, and, uh, clown acts, it will only catapult you. And I can tell you from experience, you will have opportunities, where people will come to you and offer you to run for higher office. So a censure might look like, you know, uh, bullying, but it will only catapult you. And if they keep doing this for you, you're going to be very, very well-known. So as one woman to another, I apologize that you have to go through this. But I am proud of you, I'm proud of the work that you do. Thank you for what you do for the state of Israel, thank you what you do for the Russian community, thank you for what you do for Sunny Isles Beach, but thank you what you do for members in Howlandale Beach as well, whether they're residents or business owners, uh, we, we, we share a common ground. Thank you very much, and I'm with you all the way.
Thank you.
Michelle Wilson?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, I appreciate this opportunity to speak today. I'm coming before you as the former president of Winston Towers six hundred, and also the former president of the Winston Towers Master Association, which consists of seven Winston Tower buildings. I want to say that, um, I do believe that this is just absolutely ridiculous to put this topic up for us, um, especially with our mayor's reputation, and how much she has done for our city. Um, she's everywhere, all at the same time. I think that we have more serious issues to address. I know that I, as a previous president, have been made aware of so many issues with our working families, our retirees, as well as our elderly community, who are so afraid, um, if they're going to be able to continue living in the home that they've lived in for decades, because of our exorbitant assessments, um, that are currently happening in, in our buildings. Um, our elderly people especially, they have lived in there for decades, and they're, they're just so fearful. I, I talk to each and every one of them, in, in our building alone, and I know many people in all seven buildings, and I think that everyone would agree. I, I'm actually really disappointed that we don't have more of an audience here today. I think I'm gonna help work on that. Uh, we need to fill this, uh, like I did for the master association meeting on all seven buildings. We need standing room only, and we need people to get involved, because I'm positive, by my conversations, that you will have a lot of support from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. More speakers?
Tamara Rosman.
Good evening, everyone. I live in Sunny Isles Beach, and, um, I lived here permanently for four years. And through the time of mayor being in charge, you can see a lot of differences. And I think?
Please, if you would state your address?
Commissioner Joseph?
With the house?
Commissioner Joseph. Please. I, you, stop.
Thank you. We need to have our addresses.
I understand. All the addresses are, are there already, but I can appreciate what you're saying. You can please give us your address, ma'am.
Uh, it's a hundred, it's, uh, two ten Hundred Seventy Fourth Street. Sunny Isles Beach, three three one six zero, enough?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and you can physically see the difference when I moved in just four years ago, and what's going on now. And I fully support the mayor, because I think she has, um, the best interest in building this community to be together, and, uh, to, to be safe and happy wherever we live, and make this a good home for everybody. So I think the rule is to work together, and not to be against each other. And I support the mayor. This is my position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maxim Guro.
Maxim, you name an address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Maxim Guro. Uh, my address is one seven five 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 Collins Avenue. I, I've been a resident of Sunny Isles Beach since two thousand and three. Have, uh, homestead exemption since two thousand and nineteen. I own four properties in Sunny Isles Beach. I've been on three boards of different associations in Sunny Isles Beach. And I'm currently a vice president at the Pinnacle condominium association. However, representing today myself, not the association. Um, I attend, uh, city commission meetings from time to time.
Sorry, could you just pull the microphone to your mouth?
And, um, it just so happened that I've not been attending the previous one, but I reviewed the video, and, uh, it came to my attention that the entire proceeding was somewhat inconsistent and contradictory. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Stivison?
Just address everything to me.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, paid a lot of attention to smart gov software, as a way to control permits, violations, and other things administered by the city. And at the same time, I realized that this wall, that is being now the point of contradiction, may not have had murals for which a city permit was issued. I don't know that for sure, but that's my, to the best of my knowledge and belief, it was not. Uh, Mr. Morris, would you be able to tell if in fact, there was a city permit for that?
We're not gonna have back and forth, but I can appreciate it.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say is this. Um, Ms. Stivison said that she has three children, and what one child gets, the other two get. So if somebody does something with a permit, then another one has to do with a permit. Because what is happening here is a precedent being established, that for someone who does something now without a permit, there is no enforcement, because somebody else was allowed to do something without a permit. In this country, there is precedent law. I'm not an attorney, there is a city attorney here, uh, who may correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it is a dangerous precedent. And besides that, uh, in the remaining twenty seconds, I will say something else. Specifically, uh, for Commissioner Jerry Joseph, your comments, never forget. You know, sir? That name-calling for somebody on Facebook, never forget?
You can finish up.
That was a reaction to a very anti-Semitic remark. So if you want to never forget those hostages, then you should forget someone who responded to such an anti-Semitic remark, sir.
Thank, thank you.
Lou Thaler?
Lou Thaler, one nine three three three, Collins Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach. I, I think most of the people that have gotten up here are, really do not understand the initial, the problem that we're talking about. We aren't here to condemn the, the mayor for everything she's done. There's a specific point that has been brought up here. And the single point is the wall, and clean, having that wall clean overall, and hurting at least twelve children that we have in the school. That's the point here. It's not how good she was, it's not that whether she did what to the Russians, or everything else. It is a school problem that we have. We ha- have, and I happen to be president of the social citizens, we pay those children, we have those children have a contest to put this, the pictures on the wall. And they have done that. And the, the mayor, with one word saying yes, wiped all those out. And that's really what we're, we're discussing here. The, we, we need to understand that our children are important. Uh, that our children should be, well, in some way compensated. I do not understand how we can do that, when you wipe out their memories. They, they had gone there, they had signed the pictures, they made the pictures, and put them on, on the wall. And we have hoped to continue to do that. That, that is the problem. And that is the, the concept of, of what we are here for tonight. It's not to say how good she is, or how bad she is, overall. We're here for that one single item, and I think that there is compensation somewhere along the way that we should have, or the children should have, not we, the children should have. And I think that that's really what we're talking about overall. I thank you.
Thank you. Mauricio?
That's all ma'am.
Okay, so, uh, before we go to the commission, I just want to clarify for, for the record, what it is, the, the motion is. This is a, this is not a, a contest of, of, uh, who, who likes me, who doesn't like me. This is very specific, a, a censure is a very serious thing, it's, it's got, um, there has to be elements there, that I'm gonna ask the city attorney to, to define. But for, for the point of clarity here, um, no children's rights, uh, were in any way affected. This was a private property owner who, um, painted a wall that, uh, had for many years been, um, painted by various people, uh, without any sort of permit. Uh, I did not instruct him to do that. Um, if I had that sort of power over Ranon Katz, there was plenty of other things that I would have asked him to do, to fix his pauses. So, Mr. City Attorney, before I open it up to the, um, commission, can you please just, for the sake of clarity, so that we do this right, um, explain to the, um, dais, and, or rather, my colleagues, and the public, what a censure is, and what are some of the, uh, elements required for that?
Okay, well, um, generally, I don't know about elements so much, but generally, censures are, and, and different bodies use them. So, for example, the Florida bar uses censure, so if I do something wrong, there's different levels of punishments, for the lack of a better term. Could be a public recommend, could be a censure, could be a suspension. The Florida Commission on Ethics uses censure as one of the gradients of their, uh, punishments. Uh, I believe the Ethics Commission in Miami does the same. So different body use censure as a way of admonishment. Um, typically, though, there obviously has to be some finding of wrongdoing. If there's a finding of wrongdoing, then the censure follows that as a repercussion of that wrongdoing that needs to be identified. So, I don't know that there's so much of an element aspect, but there needs to, at the minimum, at least in the censures that I've ever experienced, has to be some representation of what that wrongdoing is that's being censured. If that responds to your question.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Would you like to make a public comment, please?
Uh, can you fill out, um, public speaker card? Can you fill out a public speaker card?
Yeah, it's finished. It's closed.
I can allow him to speak.
Okay, I make a motion to not allow any more speakers.
Well, if you all haven't started deliberating yet, a comment was made by the mayor and a question was asked. I'm sorry? I was giving clarification, but there's no- your code talks about you all deliberating and discussing an item. So you can't start that until public comment is done. And you haven't started that yet. I was answering a question. I'm not part of the commission.
It was already said that there were no other speakers.
The chair's ruled. If you want to appeal the chair-
Okay, so we did not start deliberation. So this- the point of everything that we do here is to have the utmost transparency and allow the public comment. So there's no reason not to allow this person to speak. Otherwise, he would have to wait until the end. I don't think it's going to make a difference either way. So unless there is strong opposition. Is there opposition to allowing this speaker? Okay, please. Your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sunny Isles Beach. My name is Kevin Cooper. I am the chairman of the Republican Party of Miami-Dade County. I'm here to thank- Our- oh. My address is two zero nine six five Northeast Thirty Second Avenue in Aventura, Florida. I'm here to thank Mayor Svechn for her strong leadership on behalf of the city and the work that she has done to advance this city. She has lowered taxes. She's fought for her citizens. And she travels around both the country, the state, and this county doing great work for the people of this city. So I'm shocked, I have to tell you, I'm shocked that we- that this city has chosen to attack Mayor Svechn with this motion. I think this motion does nothing to lower taxes, does nothing to improve the city. And as a matter of fact, I think it creates division at a time when we need to be working together. We are now entering the golden age of America. And leaders like Mayor Svechn are leaders who are going to move this city and our state forward. And frankly, I think it's personally upsetting to me when individuals wear the logo of our party to attack one Republican over the other. We shouldn't be doing that. We should work together. We should make solutions. And so I implore the city commission today, I come before you all today, propose solutions, not attack one another. Propose solutions that will help. And I ask the people here today, will this motion lower taxes? Will this motion help improve Sunny Isles Beach? Will this motion make America great again? And therefore, you have your answer. No! No, no.
Thank you.
I implore you to vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, Mauricio. With that, we're gonna close public comment. I will open it up to Commissioner Stuvinson, since this was her motion to start. You're yielding your time?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. No, I'm giving you your time now.
I can talk later as well.
No, per Robert's rules, I'm recognizing you right now. So you're yielding your time? All right, just for the record, you've yielded your time. You've made the second. Please go ahead, Commissioner Joseph. And just to clarify, we're not gonna turn this into a circus. We're gonna speak one by one. We're not gonna draw this out. We're going to say whatever we need to say and let the other person on the dais speak next. So please go ahead.
Okay, so at the last commission meeting, we determined through questions of the mayor that she was dishonest in her answers.
Okay, this is where I'm gonna stop you, okay? We are not going to call anyone a liar.
I did not say you were a liar.
You said that I was dishonest. That was not determined. This is not a matter of fact. I'm asking you to introduce anything that you would like to introduce to support the second- the motion that you've made. So please refrain from calling me dishonest or anything else.
Okay. So after the last commission meeting, it was determined that we needed to have further discussions with the principal of the school as well as the Katz family, who were present when you asked them to paint over the wall.
I did not ask them to paint over the wall. Please go ahead.
That's not what I was told in my discussions with Danny Katz.
Please go ahead. Are you done?
So I have determined for myself, through my investigation and speaking-
Please, let him speak, please.
Speaking with the people who were involved firsthand, that you were dishonest on the dais and it warrants your censure.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Viscara?
I agree with some of the comments from our speakers today that there are bigger and more serious issues. But issues that arise are issues that we have to address. And this is what came up last month. A motion was made and both Vice Mayor Lama and I said, you know, we're not just gonna take one person's word or, you know, so he said, she said things that we're gonna do our due diligence and speak to the other parties who were mentioned. And so that's- I took it upon myself to do that. And I prepared my statements just so I don't forget anything. I would also like to comment, just before I get started, two things. No, this is not the biggest concern in the universe, but where there is no consequence, there's also no rule. So there are rules of ethics and such that govern these things. And that's why we're here. That's why this thing exists. And whenever anything good happens in the city or bad as a result of a decision made up here, it's not one person. It's not one person who lowers the taxes. It's not one person who improves the police department. It's done as a body, right? It's not one person, you know, maybe they may drive an issue, but if it's approved and it moves forward, it's done as a body. And nothing would happen if, as a body, we didn't agree. Okay, with that said. So at the last meeting, there was a discussion to censure the mayor for her role in painting over the school's mural and on the RK wall, that we all know what that is. Former Mayor Edel Cobb gave us his accounts of events. And Vice Mayor Lama and I decided that we would do our fact-finding to verify the account. I subsequently spoke to members of the RK organization, the school principal and the curriculum support staff, and former Vice Mayor Lou Saylor of Social Citizens, which formerly was the SIB Foundation. Okay, and that'll become relevant in a second. So this is what- this is what I found. The mayor was correct. The city's code does not allow murals, okay? There was three instances that I found that deal with this. In 2012, the commission approved a mural on the construction fence of the mansions of Aquilina. In 2018, which was something that came up in the meeting, the commission denied the application for a mural from Juzen Java, rejecting the recommendation of the city's Public Arts Advisory Committee. And if memory serves me right, I think it was- they had already painted it and then they came and they asked for the approval and it wasn't given and then it was painted over. And then in 2015, the city commission passed a resolution approving, and this is in quotes, approving a request submitted by the SIB Foundation to approve the temporary use of a wall to create an art wall located at the west side, which we know what the wall is. That resolution states that the temporary use was approved for one year and that the applicant, the SIB Foundation, would restore the wall to its original state after one year. On paper, that's all we have. Apparently, the art wall was a success and the school, RK, and the foundation decided to keep it going. There is nothing in writing memorializing this agreement. The matter of the continued use never came before the commission. And, you know, the city, it just- well, it's a night- this is what frustrates me because we've had this conversation in different ways where, well, who's gonna complain? Well, you know, why go through the trouble? But this is why we go through the trouble. We have to do things the right way because if not, when it does unravel, then there's- then we end up in situations like this. So the city did not- just kept using the mural. Everybody was happy. The kids are happy. We had ceremonies, but it was not done properly. So the correct action would have been, after that one year, to come back with a resolution or a variance detailing the new arrangement. It is the lack of proper process that brings us to where we are today. Had proper process been followed, we would have clarity on what can and cannot be done, on what the parties had agreed, on what was the roles and responsibilities of the three parties, the foundation, the school, and RK. So that's how the wall came to be. But the motion, right, the reason that we're here is that the mayor clearly overstepped her boundaries. She is the one who initiated the conversation. This is according to my interviews. She was the one initiating the conversations about the state of the wall with the school and RK instead of, again, proper process, going to the city manager when you have a problem with something. And it was based on her direction that RK painted over the wall, a direction that she didn't have the authority to give. I should note that in my conversations with the representatives of the three parties, they were consistent on one thing, and that is that nobody objects to the art wall. Everybody likes it. Everybody wants it. The principal denies stating that he did not want the art wall. In fact, the school has already had meetings for the next round of student art. As long as the city's okay with it, the principal said, he's happy to keep it. He just wants to be in compliance. It- the wall is just a fact for him. He's a new principal. He came, the wall existed, the kids have been painting it, they showed up, we had ceremonies. He never questioned it. And frankly, I didn't question it. It's been going on for ten years. And I never- it's just a fact. You walk down the street and there it is. The art wall- the art wall functions separate- are separate from RK Plaza. And it wasn't a concern to them, this is again, based on my interviews, because the foundation has kept its commitment to maintain it. And we may take issue with how they did it. Maybe they didn't use the right paint and it peeled, but they kept up their end of the deal. And until the mayor brought the art wall up as an issue, RK had practically forgotten about it. They painted it- they painted it over the day after the meeting with the mayor as a sign of good faith, of improved relations, which seems to be the mayor's purpose at that meeting. Unfortunately, the damage is done. The wall has been painted. The art is gone. And that's a direct result of the mayor's overreach, for which I feel a formal reprimand is appropriate. As for next steps, proper procedure is still required. The three parties, the foundation, RK, and the school, need to formalize their agreement and bring it to the commission. I assume it's in the form of a variance, and that's a variance that I would support. And I hope that the artists of this year, because this now- there has been a pause in this process, I hope that this year's artists get to see their work up before they graduate. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, Commissioner Viscara brings up a good point, and I would like to get clarity on this. And again, for the record, I did not direct them to paint the wall. Why was this never addressed for the last ten years by the previous administration or your administration? Or was it addressed because there were conversations about the disrepair of the wall for- I know there had been in the past. I'd like to understand where the ball was dropped on this. Because as I stated previously, anyone that wants to paint their house, to put a nail in a wall, needs to get a permit. But meanwhile, this sort of fell by the wayside. And then also to Commissioner Stuvinson's point from before, as far as consistency and having the same rules, I think this also begs the question as to why the city staff did not follow the rules here.
I don't really have an explanation other than to say that it should have been addressed many years ago and was not.
And I just want to say that for the record, the parties that I spoke to did say that you directed it. So you- there's- you may say otherwise, but I can-
Now, I look-
I can only report, so like, for the record, there's then- there's two records then.
All right. Well, we had a speaker that was also there that said something different. Commissioner- Vice Mayor Lama, what would you like to say?
Yeah, so I also did my homework. I wanted to understand what the situation was and who was saying what, what was really going on. And, yeah, I spoke to different parties. RK did tell me that you told them specifically to paint the wall. You asked them. Whether that is true or not, I don't think that's the point. In the last commission meeting, you stated and Isaac stated that he was in the meeting and Danny asked you if- about the wall and that if you could paint it, you said yes. And I think that that answer was not up to you. I mean, there should have been the correct process to follow. You know, if that wall was in shambles, we should have called code compliance. Code compliance should have warned the property owner. And then also, all parties should have been communicated or sent a courtesy email or a courtesy call saying, listen, we have an issue with this wall. Can we please address this issue? Okay? None of the parents and the kids knew about the wall being painted over. The school did not know. They came back from the break. They saw the wall painted over. So I think that should have been taken into consideration. It was not. So I don't know why that yes was given to RK to paint that wall over. And quite honestly, I think that, you know, it did really not take into consideration the art that the kids had there. They poured their heart and souls into that, those paintings. And, I mean, if I were one of those kids, I would have been livid and sad. And I think that was it, whether- I don't know what the intent was. Was it a lapse in judgment? Whatever it was, it was wrong. And unfortunately, now we cannot salvage those paintings from these kids. So given that, also talking about the, you know, following process and formalizing these types of agreements because it was a verbal agreement, sort of. And had we put something in writing, I think that we wouldn't be here talking about this. You know, we've had these issues come up a couple of times already where there's like some verbal agreements, some side deals going on. Whatever it is, I think it's just taking time away from the residents, efforts from staff, et cetera. And, yeah, I agree, there's more important things, but we need to address these things, especially when it comes to, you know, the residents and the kids. I mean, I was sworn in to, you know, protect the residents, to enhance their well-being and to protect their well-being. So, you know, having said that, I think that it was wrong for the mayor to say yes to that question from RK. RK says that the mayor instructed him directly, asked him to paint the wall. I don't know what the point was. I don't know what the truth is, but, you know, she said it herself. You said it, Isaac, that she said yes. And I think that was a grave mistake. Now you have kids that cannot look at their art. You know, they spent countless times. It's an expression of themselves. And, you know, whether that wall was in shambles, it was dirty around there. Well, that's why we have code compliance. That's why we have the property owner could have gotten a violation. And that was not done. We need to follow process. Because then we're sitting here, you know, talking about these things. And quite honestly, we all have, you know, better things to do. There's other issues that we need to address, you know? There's wars. There's different things going on in the world that obviously need attention. But then again, like Commissioner Viscara said, this came to us and we need to address it and we need to give our honest opinion about it. And my opinion is that, yes, the mayor made a mistake, whether, I don't know, it was intentional, lapse of judgment, but, yeah. I think censure is appropriate here.
All right, thank you. And based on your logic, that would mean that anytime there is an issue where someone should have painted or not painted something like their house, that there would be an expectation that they would get an email and/or a call directly to them telling them that they've done something wrong when specifically, I will say, directly after our meeting- telling them that they've done something wrong, when specifically, I will say, directly after our meeting last um month, uh Patrick Dunn, who lives in Golden Shores, called me because he was very upset that he got a um, a cita-, not a citation, he, he got a warning that he had painted his house uh without a permit, the same color that it was before, and he painted it eight months prior. And he wanted to understand if he was being targeted. And I said to him, I'm sure you're not being targeted, uh let me find out what happened. He was very upset, he admitted that he needed to get a permit, but he didn't understand why he would have to go through all of these hoops when all he was doing was just beautifying um and keeping up his house. So, to your point, uh and I think everyone's made this point, uh there was absolutely a, a problem that occurred here and which was that this was not um managed by city staff and the code, uh compliance officers. I don't know why I'm being uh targeted for this, and there, like I've said already, in no way was this meant to direct or force or, or overstep. However, you all have said what you're gonna say, so um I'll take a motion.
Well, I have another issue to bring up.
Wait, we, right now, we're talking about this, so do you wanna make a motion?
No, I have another issue to bring up regarding this.
All right, I'll let you speak one more time, and then we're gonna move on, because we're not gonna sit here all night.
So, I would like to know how many years of paintings were on that wall when, when it was whitewashed?
Okay, so I don't know the answer to that, and I can tell you that's not what we're going to be doing right now.
There were ten years of paintings on the wall-
Listen to me.
At twenty-five hundred dollars a year. That social citizens paid to have that wall painted.
I do not know these things to be fact, and that's not relevant, that's not relevant to this, we're making-
It is, because there's a financial cost to your decision.
I did not make a decision, there is no financial cost associated with this, this is a motion for censure.
That was ten thousand, twelve, so twelve thousand five hundred dollars was on that wall and cost from social citizens that you wiped out with your decision.
That was not my decision, any, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish this, I'm gonna finish this here.
So, are you still being un-honest, dishonest, and saying that it wasn't your decision? Whose decision was it then?
Commissioner Joseph, you're gonna stop, okay? We're gonna keep decorum, we're-
I am, keeping the quorum.
No, you're not.
I'm stating the truth.
You do not have the floor. You do not have the floor. You can make a motion so that this commission can vote and we can move on.
We still need to address the issue of the cost that was lost to social citizens.
We do not, because that's not part of this motion, so-
Well, I'm making it part of the motion.
Well, we can't just, the motion is for censure, that's the only motion that's before you.
No, because in the mayor's decision-
No, that, that's the motion before you on the table.
Excuse me, we need to have decorum.
No, Commissioner-
Why aren't you not asking for decorum?
Commissioner Joseph, let the city attorney speak, and then I will let you have the floor, but we're not gonna drag this on, please go ahead.
The only motion on the table currently is a motion for censure of the mayor, that's it.
Well, I'm amending the motion.
Well, to do that, you would have to make a motion to amend, it has to be seconded, and you're gonna have to vote on that.
Make a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
There's no second.
Is there any second? No second.
There's no second, all right, so we had a motion from Commissioner Stuvinson, we had a motion from uh Commissioner Joseph, do they need to repeat the motion, or can we take a vote?
You can take a vote, although I would ask again for specificity as to the, just so that it's stated for the record clearly that it's a motion for censure and exactly what the wrongdoing is that's being censured.
Okay, Commissioner Stuvinson, please.
Commissioner, could you turn on your microphone and repeat?
For abuse of power.
Okay, thank you. You have a second?
I will second.
All right. Mauricio, I'd like you to take a vote for the, for the record.
Sure. Give me one second, mayor. Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Svechn?
No.
The motion passes four to one.
All right, so now we have citizens' forum.
Vitali Falkovich. Vitali?
My name is, my name is Vitali Falkovich, ninety-eight South West One Sixty-seven, Dallas. I was actually gonna speak on something else, but I'll go ahead, because I'm very disappointed. You know, when you break the law, and, and in the criminal statute, you have to meet the requirements. As I'm coming in here on several occasions, on several meetings, and observing Madam Mayor, I never seen any abuse of power. If there's an ethical violation, this is supposed to go to ethical board, and I would be definitely happy to testify that I never seen any ethical violation that occurred. And by the way, I was here in the last meeting, and I know what actually occurred. The gentleman was arguing with the mayor, you know, if you argue in court, what happens is you get thrown in jail. And you know, to me, it's very disappointing that we accuse somebody of somebody that trying to help the city. You know, you guys should be blessed that you're not like Miami Beach, where there's a shooting happens on Ocean Drive. You should be blessed that you're not like Chicago, Illinois, where there's a shooting happens as we speak right now. You know, you should, we should, you should be blessed, people that live here, that you're not in Israel, where there's bombs going off, as you see in the restaurant, and the bombs going off, buses get blown up. And that, and it was thought that it's not one, one person, yes, it's one person, because it's an administra-, under administration front. And the administration of Madam Shevchen is that it's one of the best cities that it can be by the beach. And you know, as doing business here, coming up here three times or four times a week, I'm proud to come up to this city and do business here. I'm not proud to go to Miami Beach, I'm not proud, proud to go to Broward, but I'm proud to be in Sunny, Sunny Isle Beach. It's based on what administration is running the city, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, thank you.
That's all, mayor.
That's it?
That's all.
Okay, so no more public comment, meeting is adjourned, thank you.